All right, I will call this meeting to order. Are you all joined me for the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, we have all.
I was like, that's what passed.
Call it all.
Please.
Do it over time?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll start.
Uh, yeah. We recall this meeting to order. Can you rewind that on the tape?
Jim Schrader.
Here.
And Tom Ter.
Yeah.
Cindy Byting.
Yes.
And this is where we have said Isaiah from.
Here.
And I'm here and James is coming.
All right. I have a motion now where you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of all.
Thank you. I have motion to approve the agenda. Move. Thank you, do I have a second?
Did you second him?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I'll speak up.
All right. Uh, any changes? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the 25th? So, thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing none, Jim.
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll and disbursements?
So.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Sandy.
And I'll vote yes. I'm going to forego my report, Mark.
Couple updates, tend to be specific, but um, just think about at the end of the meeting, uh, work session, are we planning on having a work session on referendum stuff? The next second board meeting up in the world could be the 22nd. Just list it as a work session unless we have a plan to do that. Just checking in with everybody. Couple of big meetings I have coming up on February 25th. Working with GPS education, uh, seven neighboring school districts are coming in. They're kind of interested in seeing if there'd be an opportunity for partnership for school to work. Also, working with area here, uh, we're having a meeting with our local businesses to have a personal meeting on that. Also, uh, next week, big meeting, uh, with the Wisconsin Heights Educational Foundation and the Madison Community Foundation. Uh, so January meeting, the local Wisconsin Heights Educational Foundation decided to engage in a conversation on working with the Madison Community Foundation. So, looking at perhaps some opportunities, whether it's, uh, endowing some funds, one, one concept may be endowing the mini grants eventually. There may be some scholarships, um, that currently exist that could get endowed. Some other projects that will be announced as they, uh, come out. Tomorrow, Vivian and I are going to Crumery in Middleton. As I chaired with the board and administration last week, Wisconsin Heights has been awarded one of the Dane County Mental Health Crisis Team, uh, Teams Grant. So, uh, looking forward to being a part of that and the announcement. Soup for Kids, incredibly successful, earned about $9,500 raised. Some of that will be put away for future use or for endowing, as I referenced earlier. Um, planning to, uh, the teachers have the mini grants, but we have 10 $500 mini grants that, uh, hopefully we can award. Deadline for that is February 25th. Have a group of educators and community members all ready to go to review and, uh, give money away. So, that'll be fun. Met last, uh, I guess, what was it, I guess, last week, um, with Kelly Arcors. He is representing the, uh, youth baseball and also talked with Dale for input, but they're looking to have a permanent banning cage out of Black Earth site. The best place right now for all parties involved would be that in right field. So, Kelly will be getting back to me on that. If you haven't been watching the news, uh, cut some, some articles that have been, uh, very prominent. One of the hearings was on some vouchers. There was a bill proposed that basically takes 22.4 million dollars, uh, from participating dis- districts that are impacted by the statewide vouchers and the receiving vouchers. Um, that bill was pulled off of an executive session. It's coming back sometime this week. Also, uh, just to keep people informed, the referendum, changing area bills are coming back up. So, very dynamic time in education right now. Also, you may have read today, uh, there's Wisconsin qualified for $570 million of enhancing the internet. TDS and Charter, who both service this area and be elected not to participate. Yes.
That would make the folks that are reading do not happy.
So, um, please pay attention, the real good article the journalist sent online today. But, uh, yes, that $570 million is the second highest funded state in the nation. So, one of the things, and maybe I'm on a soapbox a little bit, but, uh, to me, the internet and access to the internet is one of our biggest equity issues going on, going forward. If you don't have access, you, you, the, the glass ceiling is lower. And so, um, I would encourage people to become active and, uh, share your concerns. I know Representative Pope Can is authoring a bill or is he, is discussing how to help and improve the si- situation, but, uh, and people need to continue to speak up. This is something that the village of Mason meeting is very interested in also. Did want to let the board know, uh, I did contact Dane County Highway. Uh, the turn lanes, uh, from time to time are, have been an issue again last week. I've noticed it also today. Some of it, you know, understandably, if it snows in the middle of the day, you know, they'll do their best to clear it. But what's happening is the first passes are made and the snow doesn't get off the pavement and it goes right into our turn lanes and so that's made it, uh, slippery. But, uh, appreciated Dane County getting back to me and, you know, they said, please let us know if it doesn't, doesn't improve, but they, they are watching it, so I appreciate that. And then, uh, going forward, we do have some policy items and also would like to have a finance meeting, discuss a couple of bid things, bid topics. Food, um, you know, we talked about putting our food management contract out to bid. It's a yearly contract. We would consider, you know, we suggest that we make a change in how it's reimbursed and also looking at 403D options. We made a change on 2009 and again another opportunity to just reevaluate where we're at. Thank you.
Couple of things, um.
What? No, lunch prices would be separate from the bid.
That, uh, I want to commend Mark for all the work he put into the soup for kids. Very successful, a lot of fun, um, get to see a lot of people where you, in, in outside the school situation. You know, it wasn't a basketball game, it wasn't a concert, it was really a social situation. So, and, and I think that, uh, and, and Mark and, uh, Dale, uh, consider this too, um, with the internet, with, with TDS, which is the largest provider for the rural Wisconsin Heights families, I would say. What effect, uh, does their refusal have on, on, on school age children who may have an assignment that's internet related? Or just to consider that, that they, we don't have it like you guys have in town. I live in the town of Black Earth and barely do I get one megabyte of speed. Um, and so, uh, uh, I don't know if the teachers are aware of that, but it would, it may not allow for certain assignments to be completed. Or something that maybe would take five minutes is going to take two and a half hours.
If it's a graphic dump versus a, an assignment, every, you know, ready to sign.
And another thing about our state is that they, we budget, they increased the budget for internet, rural internet, 5.5 million is what they have to spend on. Our neighboring state, Minnesota, budgeted 100 million.
Yeah, well, even, and, and just to put it in perspective, education wise, uh, in the last five years, Minnesota is outspending Wisconsin by 20%.
And, and right there, that's.
They, they shut down the budget last year in Minnesota because there wasn't enough money in education. The governor, governor said, no, sharpen your mills. If I could piggyback a little bit, and I know we've talked about this in the past and it seemed, you know, obscure, if you will, or why would we be doing this? And I understand the need for us to get internet connection in our schools. Conceptually, that's one of the ideas of, of the bus, understandably, it has costs and everything. Um, that is one strategy that school districts are using. So, uh, as I, as I shared with you, I'd reach out to Fall Creek. Fall Creek sometimes parks a bus in a, an area where there's no internet. Now, granted, costs associated, everything, they park the bus, students have the internet. So, mobile, mobile library, but, uh, it's, but going back to the internet, so there's, without a doubt, I think it's pretty, pretty astonishing that, uh, 40 minutes from the Capitol and the connectivity is not there.
And then the company responsible refuses to participate in a federal grant program, which could directly benefit Wisconsin Heights rural citizens.
So, that was TDS and.
Charter.
Um, and I can, there's three other, three major telcos that, uh, agreed to participate, other than that, I get good connection here.
Yeah, 390, the charter doesn't come to us.
We're talking about the internet?
CenturyLink is the number one. And they're quite honestly our neighbors to the north, so I would assume, uh, why that's, people may benefit.
Deal you and Charter?
We don't have guest access at schools, do we yet?
No, we're, we're working on that here next year.
Yeah, next year, so we're working on it.
Yeah, and what we would like to do, just to share a little bit, there is additional money through E-Rate, which is a subsidy, a federal subsidy. And so, our, what we're trying to make sure we understand best is for the first time, it used to be just for service, now you can get some equipment subsidized. So, we may be waiting, the conversation Scott and I have been having is to flip the camera. We, we initially said wifi over cameras, understandably. The, but for us to get a discount on the wifi devices, we would do that in July. So, we're working to finalize that, so there would be a discount. We're open to have that ready to go soon.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming nobody signed off, so.
No one signed up.
All right, personnel, discuss possible action to hire Pamela Cashman as a 1.0 FTE cross categorical special education teacher with a starting annual salary of 43,000. So, second. Thank you, thank you.
This was a, a position, um, that will be funded totally next year?
Well, it's for this year. We see, as we shared with the board in terms of staffing needs, um, this is student need based, so. I'm not trying to be cute, I will not make any guarantees, but the, that's based on student.
Anything else? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes too. Do I motion to hire Brianna Cashick as a 1.0 FTE EA at Black Earth Elementary with a starting annual rate of 1374? So.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Cindy?
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right. Do I motion to hire Brenda Halbermacher as a 2.5 hour cook at Black Earth Elementary with a starting hourly rate of 1374? So.
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Sandy? Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do I motion to approve a halftime FTE school psychologist contract with provided staff for the 15, 16 school year? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yep.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, athletics. Do I motion to approve Scott Wood as volunteer coach for the 2016 high school softball season? So, thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve the band trip for February 12th and 13th to the University of Wisconsin-Plattville to attend the Tri-State Honors Band Festival. So, thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yep.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve the field ecology trip for April 21st through 26th to the Yosemite National Park and Seymour Marine Center Santa Cruz. So.
Second.
Thank you, discussion?
How many years have we been doing this? It's been going for a long time.
15?
I'd say 20, 15. Probably not.
Probably.
20 is a little high.
Yeah, at least 15. All right, we never really had any problems?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy? Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to revise the 1617 school calendar. Thank you, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, for the clarification, there could have been some legal room, but then we also had teacher days listed on it, so just needed to.
Okay.
Actually helps balance the calendar.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yep.
Yes as well. Finance. Discuss possible action to approve an additional credit card for the Wisconsin Heights School District with a limit of 10,000 with Michael Ruby's name on it, on the card for use on the Spain trip. So. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion?
Background projection.
Well, yeah, the background is, we do this also with the ecology trip. It's simply that it allows the teacher to most flexibility within a defined timeframe and for a specific purpose.
Is there anything in written information saying you are using it for personal gain? Is that, I mean, that's obviously, no, but can we cover ourselves at all in that aspect?
Well, that's, the, what this is, this is required, what you're acting on tonight is for the bank. Not for, this is, this is for the band.
But if we're going to put his name on it, that's a.
There's an employee handbook.
Okay, that's a lot of history, perfect.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, discuss possible approval of wiring project for the middle high school wireless project with electric construction. So. Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion?
So, the background on this is this, this is what needs to happen to complete our wireless implementation project at Wisconsin Heights, at the middle school, high school, as well as gives us flexibility in wiring, um, cameras. We are also working to extend out to the press box. What that allows to do then, just as, I'm sure you've heard or you've seen, people are interested in what, uh, wired or wireless connections for recording games, things as such. It's just, uh, best to do it at once, get it out, and, uh, this is something that, just like we did a couple of years ago, this is going to happen during the school year, so we can keep everything rolling.
What's the load here on that? How many, could we, with that deck?
Well, that's based on, I wish Scott was here. This, this addresses that, but that's based on the access points or the hubs.
Right.
So, we have enough wiring to get to those points. Out in the, how should I put it? The athletic stadium, you know, that would be a little more specific to use. I don't, I, I will not guarantee public access while watching a football game at this point in time. On the other hand, in the gymnasium, different starting. Well, no, it's, it's not so much, I, how should I put it? We can only do so much. The conduit, what this will do, if, if we want more, this includes laying conduit out. They're going to trench and then you can pull through.
Okay, so.
What we are hoping to do is get it a little cheaper, or doing it cheaper, but you can't combine electricity and fiber together. And so, um, can't take the conduit where the power is, which we put in a couple of years back. Previously, all the wire out to the stadium was just, uh, very wire and exposed.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Isaiah, I'll let you, uh, make decisions on everything if you would like, or whatever you.
Uh, with this, um. Again, I really have a problem with even.
What's that?
I said I.
Are you doing them all or?
One at a time. I, I still have a tremendous problem with you. So, do I motion to approve the field trips, 3 to rule, 3 to rule 3?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Page, um.
Was it different before or? This is the secondary.
Well, it's revised based on.
Based on, right.
Based on board.
Right.
But we're, we're on A first, correct?
Hearing none, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well.
All right, second item, the motion on payment of record requests.
Are you making a motion?
I'm asking for my motion. They told me to take it over at that point.
No, I was, no, I was. Do I have a motion? You made the motion.
Oh, make the motion, oh, then I rescind said motion.
Because you were, you're a policy.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I was silent.
Isaiah, Isaiah, you're first. All right, is there a motion on, uh, on B, 188?
I'll make the motion so we can discuss it.
We can discuss it without motion, because it's discussed possible action.
Oh, okay. One of the things that, that, that I have difficulty with is the word may in there, because that puts the, that puts the opens, open records custodian.
Are you talking about the first line underneath, well, the second paragraph?
Yeah, yeah. I think if we're going to do it, we either do it, or we don't do it.
Yeah, everything says may be charged, may be charged.
And, and that, that's going to leave judgment upon someone. And why would someone be charged and someone else wouldn't be charged? I'd like to just take that right out of, of that.
So, do you want people charged, or do you not want people charged at all?
Again, we go back to the other things, what are other districts doing? That was asked last time by James. What are other districts doing? Because we're comparing ourselves on this one to the Department of Justice.
Basketball charges.
Basketball charges?
We have a policy that you get the first 10 sheets for 30 cents a sheet and everything after that is torn. We had a situation that took a lot of time and they filled the time for the tech director to get the information that was needed. That's only one district, but we've charged for 10 years at least.
Was, was, was this, was the case more of an harassment issue than an actual information gathering issue? I know that to be a judgment call. Does basketball have, have anything that says may, or is it, they will be charged?
Does they'll be charged? There's no question.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I don't think the word may. I think it is, you're either going, we're either going to charge people or we're not going to charge people.
Well, I think why they came up with may is because we couldn't come up with a number of pages, because they wanted a certain amount of, 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 I mean, anything over that, they want to charge. I think you just charge, I mean, it's, it's 15 cents.
Well, the other thing is, it says the cost of locating responsive records may be charged and then it says, as an hourly rate including fringe benefits of the person locating records. So, I have no idea what that means either. I don't, there's not a cost type that says including fringe benefits. So, I may do a record request and also I get a bill and I might put that in.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we have to send this back to policy.
The other thing too is, um, we've had a couple of requests. What average length have those requests been? Would you say 20 pages or 100 pages?
I've had requests from three pages to probably 500.
And is, uh, is, is this affordable if, if we do put it in? Or would it stop people from requesting because it may not be, uh, they may not be able to afford it?
See, I, I was asked to develop the policy based on, so that's really a board decision. You know, I haven't charged anybody. One, we didn't have a policy. You know, I know this is new and different. The salary, the, the include infringe benefits, it's pretty specific. If Penny does it, it's her salary, her benefits. If it's me, that's the custodia, or if it's Scott, I mean, it's pretty specific who does the work, so.
I know, but as a requister of the stuff, then I don't know if it's going to cost me $5 or $7.50 or $10. That's what I'm saying.
Well, no, you would tell, this is the person, you would tell the person, Mark has to do this. It may take up to five hours. I don't know, I mean, again, it was brought to the board, recommended by board. It's, it's a board decision. We'll follow. I don't know, I mean, again, it was brought to the board, recommended by board, it's, it's a board decision, we'll follow.
Did we all ask that we brought the policy, or did somebody specifically ask that we brought the policy?
Um, I suppose if there was, there was discussion of it.
There was discussion.
And it was sent to, it was sent to policy to, to review.
The reason I used this group was my, how should I put it? That's where I was going, this would be the most consistent way, most statewide, and so I used a statewide example. And then we just modified based on what was discussed.
We need to go try.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, policy, item C.
I'll make a motion to approve the voting method we want to be.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, so, um, we need to start talking referendums, we need to start, um, working on what direction we're going to go with referendums. So, Mark, what do we have, do we have much that you can foresee in the next meeting as far as like actual board business we have to?
Not right now.
Nothing?
So this, this would be an opportunity, I also have, would be able to provide feedback, I did talk to the survey groups, so they have some thoughts.
Okay. All right, so.
They're hyaluronic, so I, I mean, it's, it's like Dodson's like Voskabel, they're, they're the flip. So their, the costs to run a referendum for them is, is different. The, the reason I would say go look at Dodson is they chose that six twelve, or excuse me, K twelve operates. You know, their costs, their costs are so, are, are different, it's just a flip. And they could explain that, you know, historically how it looks, but it's almost apples and oranges, just because they're hyaluronic. You know, right now, if we borrow a dollar, it costs us forty-five cents.
No, I was reading up the data in the Times.
That's my point, my point is that for every dollar, it costs us a dollar forty-five. We're negatively tertiary. This function of our declining enrollment, um, and how should, our tax base is not diverse.
Okay.
Um, in comparison to the average.
Also, any policy, do you use policies at present?
Yeah, I would, I would say policy in March, if you wanted to do finance, I'd like to show and give more direction on the bids, and so we can, or I would like to see in finance, is we look, look at the bid, bids that we'd like to send out, and then move forward, and of course, the full board will approve, but I'd just like to go through these two bids that were developed, so people understand. I know Amy would like to do curriculum in the next month or so too. Couple topics are coming up, but there may be a few more in April, so I'd make a full.
Okay, well, if nothing is, if there's nothing, um, committee wise, it has to be done at the next meeting, let's make the next meeting a board work session, we'll start talking referendum, we'll start getting some direction on where we want to go. No meetings before, that way if it runs late, not everybody's exhausted, um, yeah.
And then, as we're doing some planning, so then we're looking at finance on the fourteenth?
Yep.
I, I would share, I'll let you know when it's ready, we may want to move that up from timeframe, but I'll share online, I will touch base tomorrow with food service. The twenty-eighth, and Chuck, you know that everybody's at spring break, everybody's okay with not having a meeting on the March twenty-eighth, we've had a couple times.
Yeah.
So.
So the twenty-second is in the fourth meeting?
Yes.
So is March, um, twenty-eighth?
Well, the fourteenth is finance.
Fourteenth is finance.
At five thirty?
Yeah, the thirty's at six.
Yeah, am I correct, am I, or am I just off here, I have a feeling off that school's in session on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, we have school that week.
We have school that week, I'm.
Yeah, we're good.
You're okay.
We're good to have one on the twenty-eighth. Because there's, that's, because spring break is the next week.
Yeah, I.
So we'll have one on March twenty-eighth.
That's just a regular meeting.
The fourteenth of finance at five thirty, you're going to be.
Yep.
And then the eleventh of April will be policy, to policy, uh, part thirty-two.
Okay, and then. April eleventh, yeah.
You said five thirty?
Yes, we.
And then, what do we want to do for curriculum?
I mean, you have the twenty-fifth, or it just depends if you want to do it on the twenty-eighth, it's up to you.
Twenty-eighth, so. Twenty, twenty.
They will update, they'll do more. Said yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for suit of state statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, for the consideration of employment promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. When the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned. So.
I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Cindy? Isaiah?
Yes.